Well, shall we get out? We usually pledge allegiance to the flag before we start our meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, one and all. Can I get a motion from you gentlemen for agenda for today?
I would move to approve the agenda.
I will second.
Okay, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Okay. Uh, only one, two, nine, or two. Why don't we go right into bars?
My resolution?
Yeah.
Okay, I have the final plat of a replat of lot fourteen for Rao Joe Mesa Estates. Do you guys have a copy of it? It's, yep, it's all in your folders in the plat. And Haley has the resolution done and it is correct, so I just need a motion to approve
And if you pass two of those resolutions for signatures, because I want to get to it.
Can you kindly explain what you want to do on lot fourteen?
He had to replat it, Tracy, because he wants to put a building on the other lot that he had, but the bank did not want to loan on the whole thing, so he parceled it out with a replat.
Okay.
And it's been done correctly.
Okay. I would move to approve resolution twenty-five forty-eight for the final plat, for the replat of lot fourteen Rao Jamosa Estates in Benton County, Iowa.
Joe Mesa, yep.
I'll second. Call for a vote. Resolution.
Tippett, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Where's you're supposed to check your phone?
I'm supposed to check my phone? No, thank you.
Yeah, she's, yeah, she's got it.
See ya.
Thank you, Barb.
Yep, see ya. Yes, so you guys wanted to clarify the motion for denying that land use, so if Ron would want to reread that motion?
Yes, I've got to find it here.
Well, it's not printed, I emailed it to you, do you want me to pull it up for him?
You can get it quicker than I was.
There it is.
All right.
Can I read that?
The motion moved to deny the request for the application for the land use change as the proposed new non-agricultural use is inconsistent with the purpose of ordinance twenty-four. The purpose use is in, something popped up right in front of it. Incompatible use that could materially alter after the stability of the overall land use pattern in the area. The proposed use would have no doubt impact adjacent property owners, whether the impact be in the property values, farming operations, overall enjoyment of the land. I do believe that the gentleman will be successful in the marketing of their property, but I do not believe the project is a good project for Benton County. Bull's adding that based on what he's heard today, he didn't believe that it would be the way to do it, and he seconded the motion. That would be the correction.
Your motion now?
That is my motion, so the correction of the minutes in the tenth of June.
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, I didn't see any problems.
Okay. Second. All right, call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Please.
I have, look, I have a lot of stuff in there. Who is C, CGW?
That is IT stuff.
Okay.
One of our vendors, wiring and stuff like that.
I would move to approve the plans. I will second.
Okay. Quick question, Haley.
Yep.
Secondary roads, we'll get a pending button out there, too?
I think the offices.
Can I question that, that they don't have it?
Yeah, probably, but I don't know if they have the panel self-installed yet either.
Okay.
But we did talk about that as well.
Okay. All right. Motion on the floor, so I will call for a vote.
Tippett, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls?
Aye.
Okay, now let's jump to, uh...
It's only one arctic claim.
Yeah, the arctic claim.
I would move to approve the one claims from the arctic, five.
General, how do you like to live this for?
Two N Systems. Vendor and amount?
Uh, the vendor is for, Jesus, Two N Systems LLC, and the total amount is for forty-eight thousand eight hundred sixty-eight dollars and fifty-two cents.
That is more IT stuff, something that had to do with the sheriff's office. And the arctic committee for that, too.
I will second.
And call for a vote on the arctic claim.
Tippett, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Initial out right now.
And just for clarification, they're the ones that spelled your name wrong, I checked, I spelled it correctly. Um, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Allison Hicks with the Benton County Historic Preservation Commission. Um, to refresh your, the memories, um, we applied for a CLG grant last August, which is a certified local government grant. We received that grant to do a historic window workshop this August, um, and as of last Thursday, we received a stop order, stop work order from the state, um, because their federal funding did not come through. We're less than forty-five days away from it, we have had, um, flyers up since early June, and we already have people that have turned in their registration. So there are two options at this point. Um, stay with stop work order and just sit on it, put everything on hold, or terminate our contract with the state. We, we can terminate our grant contract, well, we can't, you guys have to, because you're the one that signed it. Um, like I said, it's in motion, everything's set, all registrations are coming in, the outward cost to us, um, is about thirteen hundred dollars, we have that in our budget. Our commission would have been last Thursday or Friday, um, did, we discussed it and we voted to continue with it, terminate our contract, but like I said, we can't do that, you guys have to. What are your thoughts?
How much was that for? What was the reimbursement?
One thousand two hundred and thirty dollars. Our grant is actually for three thousand some, but it's all gifts and kind, meaning my donated labor, their donated labor, the rest of the commission, actual cash out-of-pocket cost is twelve hundred, twelve to thirteen.
They also have spending authority in your one, three, two?
Yes.
For both fiscal, I mean, because it'll have to come out of your system.
And might end this?
Forty, August ninth, this August ninth.
Well, that'll come like this New Year's.
Yes, yes.
Gentlemen?
I think they should go ahead and continue out of it, if they can make the numbers work. They've already put a lot of work into it, so.
Is, is there any chance that the grant money's gonna be allocated? Has it been removed from the budget or just not allocated yet?
The official thing, gotta put the glasses on to read it. Um, due to non-received of federal funding, and it just says a stop work order regarding any, and paused work, so it could be paused indefinitely.
Okay. Would we can move, move ahead with it, it's in the budget and they have spending authority?
I'd make a motion.
Do you want to terminate contract then?
Yes, yes.
That's what the protocol we have to do, isn't it?
So I would also ask if you guys, since we're on a time crunch and we have to do nothing until that termination contract is signed, but I didn't want to ask them for one until you guys decided yes, to vote today to have you, allow you to sign it when it's received.
Yeah, because we didn't word it that way on the agenda today, so I would think if you're going to terminate it, we'll have to put that in next weeks.
Okay.
Because you just, yeah, you just said discuss the grant, that's all we were told to put on.
Because we didn't know what we were doing when I sent that to you.
If we put it on next week then, you know where you'll have to come here, unless you get paper, otherwise.
They won't send it to me, they'll send it to you.
Yeah, we'll get those emails.
That's a bone of contention I have with Shebo, but...
You can kind of see what two of them thinking on, I think it's all right. You got your budget and then you're charging the fee for the people to come, right?
Yes.
Well, that'll help offset a little bit.
Because a state grant will not pay for food, that's what the money's for, so they're paying for their own food.
Understand. Well, you got some guidance, um, Haley, if you want to put that on next week?
Yep.
You're welcome there.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I have a copy, but I can't, thank you. Nope, I'd figure that out eventually. Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Meredith, we'll get you going right away. Explain to these other two guys.
Yes, so my name is Meredith Rungy, I am the new care navigator at ASAC here in Benton. So as my role, I am to work, basically case management work, to help with their social determinants of life. So I have nothing to do with treatment, I'm solely just outreach to help clients facilitate anything that I can, so filling out applications, looking for housing, um, applying for jobs, the options are kind of endless, we do a lot of help with transportation to and from treatment. So I am new to this job and in starting to try to create more of this program to get it back on its feet, from my understanding, it used to be pretty successful in the past, so we're trying to get it back to that. One thing that kind of struck me when I came into this position was a lot of the resources for our clientele are in this building, except for us. So my question was, in talking with my supervisor, if I could be present in the building for a few hours here and there, to make it known that I am available, these are the services I can help you with, and then if I would have a client reach out to me and want to talk to me while I was here, if there would be a room available for me to then talk with them.
I think it could be a good fit for the building. Uh, I know that at one point the Abby had showed interest in the hub, I didn't know where that had went.
She's not at the first of July yet.
Okay. That's it, and I didn't know if that would be a good fit for her, maybe that's a conversation we should have.
I don't believe she wants an office here, she just wants a room, mainly like on Tuesday morning, so we have our supervisors meeting.
So I had talked with Courtney and Brody both about what they kind of thought were their high-traffic times, and I, it seems like Tuesday because of the food pantry, that that's kind of a high-traffic time, so just to do a few hours here, a couple hours, just be present, I can, I don't have to have an office space for the whole duration, I'm totally fine hanging out in the hallway, just making it known that I'm from ASAC, make a familiar face to the company, so they know that, again, if transportation is a barrier and they're walking everywhere, that they don't have to stop over at our ASAC office.
Well, we got Mona's room right next door, it all depends which part of the building does she like to be in for right now, if you want it centralized or if you want, right up by the door?
I don't have a preference, honestly, yeah.
The HR right now has that combination lock on the doorknob.
Yep.
Which will be changed today.
Because I had been in there yesterday.
It will be changed, but I just thought it would be simpler if she was right next by the door here, right next to Courtney. I haven't been in there, have you been in there since, one of that?
I was still desk there.
Yeah. The big chair there, too, so, I mean, there's a big, comfortable chair.
I think, I think we'll, we'll have a space where she can land.
Yeah. So, without making it formal, I, I would say just go ahead and plan on using the room right next door.
Okay.
You know what I mean? I don't know for sure where the key is to get in that room, you got it? Okay, you can maybe pass it on, or left the security guards have it?
Yep, you can do that, leave it there at desk, so it's not, so it's available.
Courtney usually lets her door, the hallway door, always open, but it's got locked to get into that individual room itself.
Okay.
Different key, so.
Yep, we can do that, we'll leave it with the security officer.
Okay.
That way down the road, we don't know what's all going to take place here, come through, we don't have a clue.
But I think we got room one way or the other.
Yeah.
Because we do have the small conference room.
Yep. All righty, I'll give you some guidance.
Yep, appreciate it, thank you.
See you, Meredith. Okay, I can outline.
You want to do the nine fifteen?
Yeah. And key that one. Yes.
I'm Julie Davison, I'm COO and interim CEO for the region. Deb Guard had been here talking with you, but she was unavailable today, so I said I would pop in in her place, so I'm not sure if you have questions, I know it has been on a couple of different weeks and then deferred, so.
Well, I know that, because I asked, because County Attorney Lau, if he received any reply from our amended MOU from Deb, and we haven't received a reply yet, so I don't even know if they, what are the feelings with those changes, I know the board has been shared with those changes, and they were shared with what Ray's opinion was, so that's all left.
I'm not aware of the amended MOU, typically, if it came to me, I would have the region's attorney take a look at it, can you explain what the changes were?
Sure, um, so essentially, last week, I expressed my concerns, um, and we moved it next, to this week, and I know they gave me a name to talk to someone from Johnson County, I did talk to that attorney, actually, right before he went to their board of supervisors' meeting, to discuss what they were doing, because he was telling me that they did opt out, and they took out all the 2080 language and all that, and essentially, like, their board was wanting to, he, with his words, extend like olive branch, because there's been people that have been working there for thirty-some years, and I think it was four people that they were going to house and whatnot, and essentially, it says all the terms that Kenny gave you, I know they rented out office space, includes that, I can tell you personally, that makes me feel a little more comfortable, and I know, like, Ray definitely, just, you know, we're all good, like, with all this, he just didn't want to say, like, our employee technically is there, is under the legal test, in my opinion, because of, like, stuff we've discussed, too, in the past, but it'd just be like repayment on all those benefits, and then the one thing we asked is they just pay for liability insurance.
And we will cover liability insurance.
Yeah, so, um, that's essentially what it is, I don't know if we have an extra copy that you can look at?
So did...
Oh, you've never seen it? Okay, well, um, the board, so Ray must have not sent it to you.
And maybe that's why Deb didn't, Deb had it.
Well, because like, it did, it did get sent to her, according to Ray, so, because I sent my changes, and he wanted to look it over, and then he forwarded it to...
So is it, does it piggyback off of Johnson County?
A little bit.
Okay, so I did have our attorney review the Johnson County one, the concern he had, well, he brought up a couple of different things, one of them actually protects you, which is, that they removed, which is your ability to, um, request mediation if we don't pay you what you think you should be paid, along those lines, the other one that was removed in their part had to do with the district's ability to discuss performance with the board of supervisors. I think on our end, we had a little bit of a concern with that, what would happen if the staff, I don't have a concern with Sarah, but overall, what would happen if a staff is not performing the duties, if they kind of just quit doing it, or, you know, they're not performing up to par, what recourse do we have at that point, if there's no language in there about being able to discuss performance and employment with the county? So that was, that was what I got back from the attorney, I mean, you certainly can move forward with your MOU, and I can present it to the governing board on Thursday, we're very short on time at this point, or if, if it's amenable to you to add in some type of language, it doesn't have to say 2080, if it just said the disability access point could have the communication with the county, you know, if there's a way of communicating with the employee performance. The use of the 2080 language in the MOU is more related to, that's how the ECR was established, and we should take it.
And that's, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
That's just generally what MOU is, it's like an intention to contract between parties, and it's supposed to outline, kind of like what I was kind of discussing last week.
Are we still willing to give them all of our equipment and stuff?
Um, Ray, Ray was, you know, look at that, I thought.
So I mean, that, even before we were reaching for that, was levied in Benton County, so that our county taxpayers paid for that property stuff, so if it's going to go to the region that's not even representing our county now, it's going to be, I kind of feel like we...
So it was not reimbursed by the region?
Some of it was, but it was still, you know, our levying for mental health dollars.
How long, how long ago were they?
Because we've had that office equipment before.
Okay.
I mean, the vehicles were new.
That was fun spending down there.
Yeah.
Okay, the office equipment was?
Yes.
But the vehicles were paid for by, and honestly, the, the desks, we won't, we have, we have no use for the desks.
Basically, just the two vehicles you're talking.
The vehicles, and then I don't know if there was computer equipment that was purchased recently within...
I think there was a laptop, I'd have to do their inventory list for sure.
But no, we, we don't have an intent of trying to take desks or those things, those would be given to the county for your use here, it's more that, as we set up all of the offices, it's more the, the use for the vehicles and then any technology, but I don't know that your technology would have been reimbursed by the region, I'm not sure.
Um, I'm looking at the edited MOU that we sent, gentlemen, you know, that language, like, you were wanting in their review of, like, say, Sarah?
Yep.
I did take that out, I, I guess my idea was, the way I was reading it, it was going to be like in association with the 2080 agreement, like, say, for future stuff, so, but given what you're saying, like, I get your intent, I guess I read it different when I read the MOU.
And that's where I think...
The attorney wanted to change some language there.
Yeah, we were trying to take out all of the language that said you had to be a party to the 2080, to, you know, a member of the 2080, and honestly, probably just missed that language, if you are okay with putting the disability access, or East Central Region, disability access point, anything other than 2080... If you are okay with putting the disability acc- or East Central Region Disability Access Point, anything other than 2080, to say that...
Just, we could even say, just review Sarah, 'cause I know...
Yeah.
One thing we just did too, and I took this too from Johnson County, is just a one-year deal.
Yeah.
That starts from the July 1st of the fiscal year through the end of the fiscal year, June 30th.
And honestly, if we can get things in place sooner than that, we can come back to you and say, are you okay ending the MOU earlier? It's just there's so many moving parts right now, just to develop the service itself, that we have not had a chance to have a single county of employment.
We don't know how we're getting reimbursed for the mental health advocate yet.
That was the, yeah, that was the other part I know we discussed.
I keep asking.
I think we're having something possibly this week, and I know at our auditor's conference, we're Tuesday.
I do know how you're getting reimbursed. I know who's paying it. I don't know the method yet. I know that, um, it is, according to code, it is to be paid by the, um, ASO, which is Iowa Primary Care Association. I have asked them for, how do they submit it? Because I've not found anything and everything that came out, and they have not yet replied to me on how to submit it. But it is in code. I mean, they, they are required to pay it, and in, in their information, it does say that I, that they will pay that. It just does not say you can email your invoice to this email. So that part I do know.
So, I guess, like, then at this point, um, I guess if that's like the big change, you know, we can always throw an amendment if this is something that the board wants to go through with. 'Cause I know, like, y'all heard our, what our feelings are. It just, yeah. So anyway.
Tracy, what happens if you guys decide to just turn this down? What's, what's, what, what way you go then?
She can, still gets paid, but she'll be paid. She won't be paid.
She would be laid off?
Oh, that's... That's, that's where I wanted to go with this. I wanted to get this out.
Because I was under the interpretation that, from last week, she was getting paid from some other source.
Yeah.
Wait, who are, who are you referring to?
Yeah.
Sarah.
Sarah.
So Sarah has to have an employer. At this point, we do not have another employer for her. Lynn County has agreed to hire the new individuals coming in, which is more like Sarah's equivalence. Lynn County is in discussion right now, because we had one other county who did not sign the MOU. Lynn County has not yet agreed to pick up individuals coming from other counties. They, their, uh, one of their attorneys is questioning whether they should continue pick... They agreed to the initial four, whether they should continue picking up anymore. So at this point, and if they did agree to it, they would, it would probably take a month to get it in place, so then Sarah would be laid off for that month.
Would this revert back to the state then, to, for the, go back to the government that started this mess? And let her pay for it?
Would the, the disability access point will pay for it? It's a matter of who the employer is. I mean, there's, it's not an issue of paying Benton County. It's just that if Benton County does not want to maintain her as an employee, we would have to find out another, uh, avenue to employ Sarah, which would take a while, and there's no guarantee.
She would have to start at the bottom, is that correct?
Yes.
She would have to.
Yeah.
Big advantage for, for, you're exactly right, but it's the big advantage for Sarah is she keeps her current wage, and she remains under hypers.
And her benefits and...
And her benefits and everything.
So we have asked, um, I mean, Lynn County has been gracious to hire the new individuals, but according to their union contract, they have to start everybody at, that's in that classification, at level, like, the first tier. So they would start as a new employee, um, pay-wise and benefit-wise. They don't have the ability, uh, at least from our discussions with them, they don't have the ability to bring somebody in at maybe tier three or whatever, based on their experience. They all have to, according to their union contract, start at the bottom.
She won't be going to work in this county. She's not going to be working here.
This county, no. But, uh, it's a unique situation. Benton County is not in our new district, but because Sarah has been an employee with our district for so, well, with the East Central Region for so long, we were hoping to try to maintain her without her suffering financially and, and, you know, like, time-wise vacation and everything.
So she'd be considered a Benton County employee? For, for, let's say that something happens to her, uh, when she's, I mean, she's not even gonna be working in Benton County, but let's say we're, if she's an employee of Benton County, and something happens to her on the job, then what's our liability?
That's why, one reason, that's one reason why we want liability insurance to be covered. That's the other thing that we included in the MOU that was kinda similar to Johnson County, was like, office space rental, renting office space. And, um, again, that was what we threw in, and we just didn't know if...
So Sarah would not be... Her office would not be here. Her office would be in Buchanan County.
Well, I, I get that. I guess that's what we were gonna offer too, 'cause that was one of my concerns too. It's just like, that's a whole different mess that I don't even, I would have to spend time to research that I don't have to be honest. I'm sorry, I'm just being honest.
We would definitely have to amend our budget.
That too.
Yeah, we're most, we're all, because we were told to only budget, we didn't think we were going to be able to maintain, so everybody budgeted for closeout budgets only.
The accruals, when that was...
Right, just the accruals.
What happens after the end of the year? Are they gonna figure out where she's gonna be slid in then?
Yes, the plan, the plan from the beginning was that after the year, or possibly sooner than the year, there would be the, um, a single county of employer. We would have to put out an RFP. Several of the, um, regions are now districts, uh, operated in that manner, where Franklin County employs all of CICSs and, uh, Padawatomi County employs all of the individuals for their, their district, district.
But potentially, a year from now, when she's no longer an employee of Benton County, she could lose all of her benefits and everything anyway, right?
No, the RFP would be an RFP requesting that a county, um, we wouldn't be able to do an RFP with a county that can't allow that. So the way the other, um, regions or districts have done it is that they coordinated with the county through an arc, through a process and agreement, that nobody loses their pay or their benefits, that that county agrees to... Basically, we would be contracting for HR and payroll services, and that county would be managing the employees, but not, they would not fit under the typical county process of new employees.
Sounds like a mess. Yep. That's, that's, that's where I was, that's where, like, that's why my stomach is the way it was, like, even before this. It's just, I, there's just a lot of what ifs on my side of it.
So if her office is in Buchanan, are they willing? No, but she said her office is in Buchanan County.
Sarah would be serving, originally, Sarah was going to serve Johnson. We had an opening occur out of the Buchanan Hub. I visited with my board on Monday, and at this point, they did not want to bring on new employees. So that...
I knew last week that's where they were kinda in the...
They were. I, I met with them on Monday about Jones County, and...
And I've talked to Whitney Jones.
Yeah, and they didn't sign, if I'm not mistaken, right?
What's that?
They didn't sign.
Jones did not sign. No, their employees will be laid off effective the 30th. I apologize that we're at this point right now.
You don't have this memorandum of understanding from the county attorney?
I have not seen it.
Yeah, I apologize, 'cause, yeah, 'cause it was, Ray said, told me to send to Deb, so...
And it's very possible that Deb has it. I honestly have to tell you that things are...
I'm sure hectic.
Very much so, and a lot of things were put in place before our CEO left, and we're playing catch-up. At least I am, um, as interim.
We've got a meeting Thursday.
What's that? Yeah.
We've got a meeting Thursday.
Yes.
How about if we...
Do you want me to email Deb during the meeting, like, 'cause she did email this morning?
Deb is at a medical appointment, or at a...
'Cause she had messaged to give a phone number.
Yeah. I mean, I'm happy to take a look at it if, let me look at what Monday brings. I mean, if you need me to come back again on Monday, if you need, um, although we need to have it, it needs to go to our governing board on Thursday if we're going to agree to it. I did offer to Jones County, and I'll offer it to you guys too, that, um, even if you would agree short-term, while we try to figure out something else, we're just trying to not have the employees... I mean, it's not Sarah's fault of any kind and none of ours. I, just, if we can figure out some way even short-term for us to, I mean, we could work with Lynn again, and, and Sarah might be able to come in and have a pay cut and, um, and lower vacation. I mean, we might be at a point where she has to make a decision, um, even if it's six months, two months, you know, something to help us figure out, allow us time.
What two guys made, can you take out, you got it up on your computer?
Um, I did. First, I'll pull it back up really quick.
Take out the rent part?
Yes.
The what part?
Rent. You don't need that, so...
We don't need office space.
You don't need that being in there. If you could delete, where it says DAP will rent office space, Benton County Center, Benton County Service Center for $550 per month, a total of $6,000 per year, $6,600 per year. Delete that all out of there. Move the numbers back up, since you're gonna delete number nine out of there. And then print that off and send that with her today, so she can have that for her board meeting on Thursday. And if they ain't got no problem with it, couldn't we actually vote on this by phone on Friday? Or even have a special meeting on Friday?
Or you could, if you want to, I mean, you could approve it pending there, and if they say no, then, um, or I can come back with any input.
Yeah, you could do, like she said, you would approve it if they agree to your amended MOU that post changed.
And I'll be, I'll be, even, Sarah, I'm not her direct supervisor, but I am the supervisor. I'm happy to come back if there's anything, you know, you want information along the way. I'm, I'm happy to come back and provide anything that you need.
Well, and, um, Haley's okay if I can say, 'cause I don't have a link to a printer.
Yeah, what do you need?
Um, I'll just send you this.
I need you to do it again.
I can give you my email address too, if you want.
Yeah, send it to Haley, and then Haley can...
I have Julie's, the one you just sent me, if that was the right one.
14.
All right, give me a second. I just took out that one, and I'll just, uh, I'll include Tracy too, just, or everyone that, uh, with what I, the changes I made too, so...
I wish you can have it with her today right now.
Haley, I can let you know once I hear back on how to build the advocate too, and I'm sure your attorneys will be wanting to know, and Sheriff's Department, because they will all be billed in the same manner.
Right now, you're signing off on the time sheet, correct?
I guess.
Oh, for advocate, okay.
Will I still be signing off on them?
That's what I don't know.
An employee that doesn't even work here?
That's, I, yeah, so like, do you know what other counties are doing for their advocate?
For the advocate? In Buchanan County, the board is directly supervising, but my advocate works. I mean, she works in my office. She's there on a very regular basis.
That's what you kinda know, otherwise, like...
Yeah. Which is, is the expectation that our county set up for our advocate is that they would be working regular office hours? And so, yeah, it'll go directly through our board. I was referring to any transports that you do. So now, how, if you do a sheriff transport, it gets billed to the region, those will get billed to the ASO, if it's a mental health transport.
I'm forwarding this to you right now, Julie, and I'll copy Deb.
Okay, thank you.
That's all news to us. I didn't know anything about reimbursement for a mental health transporter.
Maybe she asked your office, yeah.
They take care of that, uh, through the services, paperwork? They get billed that way through the, through business office?
If you approve this, will they still have a, a card, driving a car?
Um, the, the plan that Deb is working on is to, for the region to license the cars, so that we carry all the insurance.
Now, now I'm really confused, 'cause I thought she wasn't gonna perform any duties.
That's what I'm saying. Two cars for who though? Benton County cars?
They were purchased by the region. The region, the region did not hold any assets. They were held in the county, but the property of the region, according to the 2080, and they were purchased with the region's money. So it's, um, the plan is to transfer the vehicles into the disability access points name, so that the county's not covering insurance.
I, I guess I'm really confused. I thought she wasn't performing any duties within Benton County.
Wait, are you talking advocate or Sarah? We are talking two different people.
I thought Sarah. I thought we were talking about Sarah.
We were talking about Sarah, but then it moved to advocate.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, they're supervising advocate. It moved over to Bethany.
Okay.
Yeah.
I apologize, that is a little lost.
No, we will not be in that, uh, district.
Okay. So Sarah, we'll have a car then still, is that what you're saying? Okay, how about gas?
That will be all covered through the region.
So, okay.
So the wax card, we wouldn't have access to?
So we'll take back the cards that we have?
Yep. You would take back the cards?
I would think of as a joint verse, for sure.
So do you want to work on approving this, uh, amendment with the additional removal of rent? Uh, and then send it on to the region for their approval?
Or your approval pending that they approve your change?
Pending their approval?
It's got complicated. What time is your meeting on Thursday?
One o'clock.
And I'll still echo Ray's stance on it, is not to sign it. I just want that known too, okay? Just...
Why don't we just plan on having a meeting on Friday?
And short staffed, so...
Have it in your office. 'Cause that's the only thing to discuss is this, if they signed it, or if they added anything to it. If they added anything to it, then we need them to look at it. But we're getting down to crunch time where everybody's gotta be willing to get it.
And also too, if it could be set later in the morning, 'cause I do have a doctor's appointment at eight o'clock, so...
Okay.
I can make Friday morning work.
Number four?
And you're gonna just, you're just gonna all meet in there?
The work for you guys?
There won't be...
Friday, Friday work.
There won't be Zoom access or any of that?
Eldora.
Friday?
Oh.
I can probably come in by fall.
What time does it start up there?
Starts at ten.
Ooh, it's an hour and a half drive up there. He can do it in the morning. Afternoon?
Afternoon would be, I would say would be better, but...
Three?
Three would probably would work.
Three?
Yeah, I don't know, I think it's good.
Very far.
And that's in the auditor's office?
Yes, second floor. I have a little...
Courthouse?
Yep.
Yes.
I have a little office room in my, my office with a table.
All right.
It just won't have Zoom cameras or anything. So that's strictly the only thing on the agenda then?
Yeah, only thing.
Discussing the MOU, the amended, right? Discussing the MOU, the amended, right?
The amended.
Is anybody gonna be able to see that?
I won't have zoom capabilities in my office though. But you're welcome to attend.
Yes, Friday, what time, three?
Three.
I just have to come to my, my office in the courthouse. Because I'm at a conference and I have two that have kids at the fair, so I'll have one person left in the office.
All right, we'll see you Friday then, unless it's differently, thank you.
Thank you, and I email do that, so.
Thanks.
Did you want to make a motion that you're doing anything with it?
Why not yet?
Well, are you gonna like table it till Friday, make that as a motion?
I would make the motion to table the LOU for the DAP until Friday at three o'clock. And the meeting will be in the auditor's office.
I'll say. Can you call for a vote?
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
All right, we got Zach Fisher? I'm gonna get a motion to accept the resignation of Zachary Pfizer.
I would move to accept Zach Pfizer's resignation, his correctional officer from the Sheriff's Department.
I'll second. Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
You want to jump down to number sixteen?
Yeah. Now, when I did that, right away. Reappoint to the Civil Service Board, Mark Pittman. He's been on it quite a few years, right?
He's been on it, his terms June thirty, I think this was his first term on it, four years. And this is the county attorney's representation. Because the board has two and then the county attorney gets one.
Can I get a motion?
Yes, I do.
Okay, and make a motion to reappoint Mark Pittman to the Civil Service Committee.
I'll second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
I would be tied with the other two, so let's discuss approved tax abatement on mobile homes, 31737.
Yeah, we have two more mobile homes out of Timber Ridge that have been, the mobile home park has actually been cleaning up from all the mobile homes that have been falling down and the owners have left them. Some of them were destroyed in the derail show and they just walked away. So I have two more that are inhabitable and they're tearing them down and disposing them, disposing of them. So I just need to get them off of our county records and they're both on county held tax sales, so. We're not going to get any money for them. So I just need you guys to approve the resolution so I can abate them and get them off the record.
Okay. I'm gonna get a motion for a resolution 25 dash 29.
I would make a motion to abate the taxes on 31737 in the amount of $1,232. And on 06L13320, the amount of $313. Both of these are located in the Timber Ridge Trailer Park and are, they have been dismounted or are being?
They have, they just dismounted them and gave me the forms.
So they're, they're gone on?
They're gone, yeah.
Second.
Can you call for a vote?
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Thank you.
I'll get Julie's copy.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, have a good day.
I'd like your funds transferred.
Yep. So in the, in the fiscal year 26 budget, we do our operating transfers of funds. So every year we have to do this new resolution accordance to the section 331.432 of IO code. So we transfer that general basic funds to secondary roads in the amount of $285,750. And if you remember, that's kind of reduced from last year after my own reductions. And then the rural service levied fund, we all transfer $3288,400 to secondary roads. And then the land acquisition, we have spending authority to transfer $100,000 from general basic if that is needed. So, yeah, I would need, that one is a separate resolution. 2551.
You got some of these things in my folder for next week, I think.
Which one?
Resolution 2550.
Nope, that's on here too. That's interfund transfer, there, that's, that's a different, because it's coming from.
Okay, you've got them all up, but it's different.
Yeah.
Got it. So can we switch, let's do the transferred by number?
Oh, yep, yep.
Well, let's do the resolution 2550, guys.
So those are the local auction sales and service tax money we transfer to secondary roads. Because these are not levied funds, that's why they're separate resolutions. Those are not levy dollars. So that one I need a transfer of $390,000. And then the county attorney collections incentive fund, we agreed to improvise for salaries into the general basic fund for the county attorney's assistant for $7,500. That way I'm not paying out of those two funds in payroll, it's just going to be one simple transfer.
Well, can I get a motion to approve, uh, resolution 2530?
2550.
Yep, excuse me.
Okay. I'll make a motion to accept a resolution 2550 for the transfer of funds from local auction sales tax to secondary roads and from the county attorney collections incentive fund to the general basic.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Can you call for a vote?
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
I said I was busy taking up resolutions.
Yes, you were. Now, we'll do 2551 for the region.
The conservation land acquisition, did we need money there, did we remove all that?
Originally it was going to be 200,000, we reduced it to 1,000,000.
Took half of it. I would make the resolution to, for 2551, to transfer funds from the general basic to secondary roads for $285,750. From the rural services basic to secondary roads for $3288,400. And from the general basic to the conservation land acquisition for $100,000.
Second. Can you call for a vote?
Tippet, aye.
Seamen, aye.
Bulls, aye.
Next is the appropriations resolution. And again, in accordance, accordance to section 331.434 subsection six, even though this, the, every department comes to you and you guys approved the actual budget, now you're actually providing spending authority to those departments, so this is called the appropriations. And that becomes effective July 1 of 2025. I did do something a little different this year. I added that second page and I listed out each department, what the budgeted amount was and the appropriations. That way we're transparent, you can see what department is what. And this is where if you were to decide, for example, out of that total for your supervisor budget, like 325,148.65, you could allocate it in quarters, twice a year. I mean, if you were to put stipulations on it, this is the time where you would do that.
The only thing I seen that caught my eye, I'm okay with it, but section four.
Yep.
When you start reading, she shall immediately so inform the board.
Yes, so that's.
Board of supervisors, explain it.
So, so that would be like, for example, last week I did a service area amendment. So once the state budget, we approve that budget and it's by service areas. I do reports by service area and functions, so if I see where somebody's going in the hole in a function, as long as it's in that same service area, we can allocate and remove them. I do journal entries to move those, like we did last week. But every department head is responsible, they get monthly reports, we get the receivables, expenditures, to keep track of their own expenses, but ultimately, since I'm in charge of the budget, I, I try to find those things before we go negative.
But my recommendation is where you've got boards should finish off saying board of supervisors. That's the only thing.
I could tweak that.
Because then I start thinking, well, board should actually, conservation board, you know what I mean, explain it.
Yeah, yeah, so if you want me to put that board supervisors, I can do that.
That's the only thing, that's my opinion.
No, that makes, that makes sense.
And then, you know, as it says in number five, those entities provide you quarterly reports as well, so.
Yep.
We had a brief conversation yesterday, Haley and I did, about allocation all at once, quarterly, or bi-annually. At a auditor's meeting, they had discussed different ways of making it look more transparent for everybody.
Yeah.
Can you just kind of explain that for us, so?
Yep, so, like, overall, for expenditures, we have $41,381,2758. What I did is I went through and broke it down by each department, board supervisors, auditor, treasurer, attorney, rural addressing, sanitaryian, transportation, all those different entities have a department number and what dollar amount goes to them out of that whole. It's just being, like we said, transparent. I just added to our resolutions that we've used in the past for.
What are the pluses and minuses of doing the semi-annual hanging list?
I know at one time we, for example, like some of them might, might be, there's some of that spending authority is waiting on grant money. So if they were not to get that grant funding, then you would reduce that appropriation. We would have to keep track of it that way, because I know we talked about a few of them, if they weren't to get grants, they were not going to spend that money.
Am I giving the, am I giving it to them right up front or not?
Right. But most of them, I know we talked to them at their budget when they were in here, so. But that, that spending authority would show all of that as a whole.
As for breaking this up, like quarterly allotments, I thought a lot about this. I guess we personally against it. Reason why I will pick out three individual, ones like the weed commissioner. They do their main spraying and everything come May, June, July, so their biggest bunch of bills come in then. Come December, January, February, the only thing technically they're buying is gas and oil for the chainsaw and gas for the chainsaw, when they clean up the road dish and so, you know what I mean? It's hard to split their, his budget up, because he'll spend more come May, secondary roads. It's kind of the same thing from April until November, my iron's putting in bridges, doing roads. Winter time comes, now the biggest thing they got is pushing snow, they're not buying rock or anything, you know?
And as far as like, for my example, elections.
Yeah.
I could have a special election called, it's up to me at any time. Another reason some of the counties are doing this, obviously some of the other counties are hurting more in their fund balances. So with the budget cuts, the tax dollars don't start getting collected until September. So a lot of them don't have that cushion. So that's why other counties are doing it differently. Not saying we have to at this point, but, you know, we could in our future.
For most part, everybody pretty well staying right in their budget, they don't go over. And if anything, there is a surplus at the end of the year. That's what I'm waiting for here in two weeks.
Yeah, we do have a few that will do a committed, all the resolutions for committed fund balances. So if they put money aside and it's pushing, then in the budget, we have to show that that's committed funds and specific use for that.
Yep, carry over to next year, got it.
And with, yeah, we don't, we don't do that typically until, we might do at the cruel, so usually like August, September, I'll bring that to you.
So in, in next year's budget, that would be the time, take sheriff's office for instance. They're getting to the age where they're going to need some, some money spent on the outside of the building and probably look at some heating and air conditioning updates at some point. Is that something that we can commit funds ahead of time to? Because I, I know if we, if Dave had a big pump or something to lock down there, he doesn't have the money to fix that.
Well, we also do, we, we commit, I think I put 500,000 for emergency use or say we had a building that, we do commit some of that fund down just for reasons like that that come up too. But some, some departments will put $5,000 every year towards a vehicle. Say year six is when they go to buy it and they need that full 45,000 or whatever, then they put the full spending authority. It's just basically to save on tax dollars every year, so they're not just taking a big burden on that one tax year, it's split out.
We should probably really hard look at that.
Like my election equipment, I start committing for that upgrades every six years or whatever.
Yeah, the sheriff's office needs 30 to 40,000 dollars worth of tech pointing on it.
That's been brought to our attention before too.
Yeah, and that was 10 years ago.
And we do have capital projects funds for some of that, but depending on the amount, obviously, you'd have to get.
We kind of need an avenue, so.
We're talking upfront, right? On that. On that, yes. I don't publish the full resolutions because we're trying to save costs, but the full resolution will be on our website with the-
And the budget as well?
Yes, budget's already on our website. But the budget, like a normal person looking at our budget wouldn't know what, like, how much of that amount is the auditor or recorder. It's all by service area, whereas this is breaking it down for you.
And that will be on the website too?
Yep.
And then if we wanted, we could go monthly, quarterly, biannually and-
Like I said, I think we're, you know-
Do a release that way and we can print that and the public can see that and nowhere-
But if you were to put a stipulation on maybe just one particular department and you say, yeah, when we've had that years past.
Well, another one I could pick on, conservation, you know. Now it'll be mowing lawns all the time, you know what I mean, so they got a lot more expenses.
Their seasonals, yeah. Their payrolls are going to be higher this year.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to put somebody like that, you know, on a quarterly allotment when they would be over, you know, like quarterly or actually be short, even though they got money in their budget. So as of right now, you know, I'm totally against.
That's fine, I was just going over some of the options for you.
It was brought, one of our meetings here that had got me thinking and I thought, well, that was kind of smart to do it quarterly, but the more I get into this, looking at it, that, no. There's too many of them that it would affect the wrong way. Wouldn't be actually saving money. And then I thought, but if a guy would implement that, would we have to, even though they had the money allotted to them, would we have to do a resolution to give them the extra money?
Probably, because that, you'd have to give the spending authority.
So much more paperwork.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we're okay, we don't have any abuse right now, but and most departments understand if they don't get the grant funding, they don't spend that, that spending authority that they had. Same with like land acquisition, conservation, just because they have that $100,000 in their spending authority, it's still stipulated by what you guys approve or not.
You have to talk this one out.
Yep, I would make a resolution, a motion to approve resolution 2552. Appropriations for each different offices and departments within the county for the fiscal year beginning July 25 and ending June 30, 2026.
Is that going to be including where section four has changed?
Yep, I'm going to tweak that to the Board of Supervisors.
Then I would second that one.
So we'll sign it later then?
Yep. It's not officially approved until you approve minutes next weekend.
Yep, okay. All right, call, pray, vote.
Tippit.
Aye.
Name and I.
Bulls, aye.
Thank you. I have two more. So I have resolution 2553. This is our bank depositories throughout the county. The Treasurer, she's authorized to deposit money in different bank accounts. Sometimes she buys CDs with our investments, we get different rates from different banks. So what this does is just lifts up, lists out all of our banks and what our maximum not to exceed deposit amounts are. And Melinda's looked this over, we did have to take out a couple and tweak it, so. And then the difference between that other one, resolution 2554, this is official bank depository limits for individual accounts, like the Recorder has one, because she's got reasons just like out of her, can't think of the name of her fund right now. And then the Sheriff has one at the Farmers Bank and US Bank. And then Transportation has access to Bell Plane Bank. When they're drivers, they can go deposit there and then that one's back. So again, these are just protocol for the start of the new fiscal year, we need to do these.
Okay, get a motion to approve resolution 25 dash 53, the depositories in Ben County.
I would make that motion to approve resolution 2553 for the bank depositories.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, call, pray, vote.
Tippit. Aye.
Name and I.
Bulls, aye.
And here is, I fixed that one, Derek.
Oh, thank you, apologize for that.
So it's 1:00 PM?
Yes.
Wait, hold on, Brittany printed the wrong one.
I screwed up for that, I apologize for that. Because I know Ray's been saying four o'clock, or not four o'clock, one o'clock.
Let me see if I can print that out real quick again for me, sorry.
Okay, resolution 2554, county official bank depositing limits. That's Alexis Spinel, Recorder, Dave Eupaul. Two of them for Dave and Mark Erickson, Transportation. Can I get a motion to approve resolution 25 dash 54?
I would make the motion to approve resolution 2554 for the depositories for county funds for the Recorder, the Sheriff, and Transportation. Second.
Call, pray, vote.
Tippit. Aye.
Name and I.
Bulls, aye.
All right, I'm going to run down, so Courtney, can you put that down for me? And also when she's doing that, do you want to?
Talk about it?
Yeah, talk about number nine or anything. I'll go see if she can-
Okay, yeah, sorry again for that.
Oh, you're fine.
All right, um. So I guess for number nine, talking about like amending ordinance 37, which is our animal at large ordinance. I know Ray has been working hard and trying to draft an amended ordinance to better reflect the changes that should need to be done. And I know he worked on it last week primarily to look it over. Of course, like, you know, there's certain protocols that we have to follow per code and, you know, we have to have like three hearing dates set, I believe. And I have, and that's one thing I got to ask Haley too, is I believe we have to publish it too, that this is going to be something that's going to be changed or the entire ordinance. And, yeah, so we're, that's going to be that process. And I know there's time limits that we need to follow. And so if we want to get the sucker changed, you know, we got to set these dates so then she can give public notice of those dates when those hearings. Because, and she, she probably's done those ordinances before and probably more familiar than I am, because I haven't even spent a lot of time in them. But I know there's at least three dates and you have to publicize it. And then two, you know, that'll be the time, like, two, if like people want, they can say their piece with the changes in that. And of course, we can get to the point of, thank you for that.
And we can't waive any of the readings on those either, can we? We have to have all three?
We have, uh.
I think Ray recommended we do all three.
Yeah, I, I think like, just, like I said, I haven't looked so much. I just know there's three hearing dates that you need to set. And two, because the idea is, is it's, you know, giving the public time to input what they would like, the rules, or you know, their input on like how the ordinance should be, because it's their community too. Because this is one that just directly impacts Ben County, so.
Is it going to be done three weeks in a row? Like that, is that enough time or does it have to be?
Well, then that just comes down to the publication.
Yeah, so I kind of looked at the calendar, because with the holiday on 4th of July being on a Friday, that's one of our papers. So it wouldn't get in, obviously, you have to have not less than four days, more than 20. So I'm predicting, like, if you want to start as early as July 15 for the first, at 9:30, July 22nd, the 2nd, at 9:30. And then July 29th could be the third and final, and that could be at 9:30 as well. And then we have to publish a notice with a summary. And then once it's all adopted and approved, then I publish the full new ordinance. So we have to give it a whole new ordinance number if you amend ordinance number 37. So it'll be ordinance number 80.
Okay. And then I was assuming there'll be a language in there that would say that this supersedes 37 and 37's number. Yep.
So are you putting dates 15?
Yep, because then if I get that publication ready, we can submit it to the paper and get it scheduled within our timeframe.
So is there a reason that has to be put off to the 15th or?
Like I said, our official, we have to still publish in our official newspapers. And the one of them has a Friday publication date, which is next Friday. So in order for us to get it to them, we wouldn't make our publication requirements. So that's why we had to wait-
They won't put our paper that-
They won't put out, yeah, so. Or it'll be an early deadline, we just wouldn't be able to. So that's why.
So, um.
So we'd have to publish in all three of our official newspapers, because that, it need to embed newspapers.
And they're only publishing on Friday?
The one is on a Tuesday, one's on a Friday, and the Gazette, I think, usually hit the Wednesday day.
Okay, okay.
Is that, would be called like the Board of Supervisors meeting, that would be a separate community event?
No, it would just still be in our live meeting, but we would like open up the public hearing.
So today wasn't included as a public hearing because there was no notice in the paper?
Correct, this is just setting the dates for the public hearing. Is that still part of our?
It's essentially send, the whole idea of legislation is to give the community enough time to see, hey, this is what we're asking to be part of the rules that govern the county. And so, you know, the idea is the, the more time you give, the more time everyone can see it. And then if they want their piece spoken, they can come to those dates and say, hey, I looked at this, I have an opinion on this, and they can give it at that time. And so that's the whole idea of it.
Well, I understand that, school boards do the same thing.
Yeah, and it's just like, to essentially, you know, because governments are for the people. And so like, you know, I, I know that's, I'm just, yeah, that's just, yeah. But it's just like, it's just so then like, we can supersede, like, it's like a check and balance, is what it is.
I did notice on the original ordinance 37, that was, it looks like adopted and published, they did waive the requirement for further readings on that one, and there's no-
You can, and that's where I'm saying, like, there's three. And so that's where, like, I don't know. And also back then, that was in 2000, I don't know what the law was back then, because like, it changes all the time. Because like, I literally just went to a conference where they tell us all the criminal law changes and civil rules changes, and so like, that's just stuff like, and a lot of it don't come into effect until like July. And so like, stuff that may have been yay then, may not be now, because the legislation may have changed. And so that's just, the frustrating part of my job is trying to keep up with all those changes too.
So do you need help with that? Because I'd be willing to look up that information and figure that out.
So honestly, like, I actually have something here right now, where like, my search engine that we use, it's called Westlaw. And so like, I can actually look up old statutes, what was said. And it actually can show me the lines it's taken out and all that, it's a great little function. It's, and it's a lot simpler than say, because you would otherwise have to go through like the, I don't even know what the Iowa legislation website is, but like have to go through all those documents, because they should have a history of all those things up there. Me, the system automatically puts it in for me. So then I just have to know which button to select and I can pull up what it looks like. And two, it also has like cross referencing, so then if there's like a statute that I haven't looked at, it can be like, hey, it's referenced in here, go look at this one. So it's, it's a, it's really, it's a really great service that we have.
Is that something that you would look up then to see if other things can be waived or?
I can, I can. I just like, like I was telling earlier, I just haven't had time, because I had other matters to work on, because County Attorney Lau has been working on it last week, I know primarily.
Have they contacted to see about the Ben County work?
So like, that's been a lot of our references to like-
So you have referenced something like that?
Yep, and so like, you know, I know like one thing, like, I'll be like, I, there's certainly like, what we're finding out, like procedures that they're listed, they're listed very bland. And so like, what that does is for like someone who has to interpret it, AKA, you know, I have to like, there's so many different things. And so that's one thing I like to put in there, something that's a little more straightforward of like procedurally, how stuff is going to go. And so like, that's just something like Ray and I will be working on that part to try to-
And you'll have that ready for discussion on July 15, that whole super hearing?
Yep, because I know he's been working very hard on it.
We do have to provide that copy in year two.
Yes, yes.
I just don't have to publish the full copy yet, held approved.
And so like, that, that goes again, like I was trying, saying like, that's one of our requirements. Like, it says that shall, so that's a requirement that we have to do to provide the public notice.
So the July 1st meeting next week with ordinance 37, is that not in?
No, that's, there are two different things we're talking about.
Yep, and so like-
That's the hearing, right?
And so like, that's one of the other resolutions. So if you hold on a quick sec, we can get that, because that's going to be the next thing we're going to talk about. With that, set a time and all that. So, but before we do that, is there any more questions on the whole timeline of it?
So then if it goes to those three hearings, after that third hearing, if the ordinance changes are approved or you agree to the ordinance to those that take immediate effect?
It does. The only thing it doesn't, won't, can't do, so like, it's a, it can't punish past if it's-
It's not retro.
Yep, 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 and that's a const, that's a constitution, excuse me, United States constitutional type thing.
Right.
So.
You haven't sent us a draft of what you-
Um, I don't know if Ray has, because he's been the one working on it, but if we can get one sent out to y'all within-
The only thing I got was Lynn County's ordinance. I can pick that all apart, that, we do not have a dog catcher. There's so much that's good, but not for Ben County, because we don't have a dog catcher.
So I was wondering, and I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but I was wondering if there are any local places where people take their animals when they go on vacation? If there could be a contract with them to hold the dogs, since you don't have the dog pound, then you could have a contract facilitated with one of these places that hold dogs for families who are on vacation and that they could keep those dogs until a decision is made on what, what should happen to the dogs. And it would just be, you know, contracted with that particular company?
I mean, I mean, it could, but there, there would be a whole different kind of thing, so like, if we contract-
That wouldn't be included in the ordinance?
So like, it could, but, but then that's a whole nother thing. It's just like, so, because like, if, because back then, when this ordinance was in place, there used to be an animal shelter.
Right.
Which there's no more, and so now we have nothing. And so if we're going to, like, with that idea, then we would have to go through a whole thing called a 2080E, which we, which is a contract agreement with a public entity, with either another public entity or a private entity with those types of services. So that would be something that we would have to explore and whatnot. But that's, that's also, that's a, that's a suggestion that we can bring forth as well. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I mean, and that might affect the language too. Yeah, I mean, and that might affect the language too of the ordinance, because then, you know, if the Sheriff's Department is then responsible for responding, where do they hold those animals? Or what is that process? What does that look like? What happens to them? Does the owner keep them in this point period, you know?
And, and, and that's where like with this ordinance being so dated, like I said, it had the animal shelter in mind. And of course, they retroactively think, what if the shelter goes out, what happens? And so then that puts us in a very weird spot that's, that does not provide great guidance. And so, but those are things that we have to like obviously look at and consider in drafting these types of things. But also to, you know, yeah, because there's just, there's just so much to consider, and this is great. This is great, great things and suggestions to give us ideas of what we can do or what we can afford to do as well.
I like that you said afford, because I really think that the fact that we as taxpayers are paying for the Sheriff's Department to respond to these incidents, there should be some sort of accountability on the irresponsible dog owner's part. If you have an irresponsible dog owner who's consistently letting their dogs off leash, why are there not sufficient fines to cover a Sheriff's Department response within those types of situations? It shouldn't be on us as taxpayers when you have irresponsible dog owners that let their dogs off the leash dozens of times in other people's yards, and they're having to respond. It shouldn't be my taxpayer responsibility to pay for their irresponsibility. So even putting language into ordinance thirty-seven that covers us as taxpayers, that we're not the ones being responsible for irresponsible dog owners. Yeah, that the owners of those dogs would have to pay.
Well, and, and see.
To support the.
And that's, and that's where like this is twofold, like you have the civil infraction part, and then you have like the disposition part, which are technically two separate things. So like the civil infraction parts were something that's laid forth. And it's point, point to like infraction amounts, like max, at least the maximum, what you can do and stuff. And of course, like typical language, it just, and you can point to the Iowa code that states that. And I know like through different ordinance, it does point towards those things as being the grounds for those civil infractions. And, and I, because it's been a while since I looked at the ordinance too. Usually if it's something where there's costs afforded to like say housing an animal, then that goes to the owner.
Yeah, I was gonna just say, yeah, that's something, like something that the owner can go to bill for.
Right. And if I, and I can't remember if that was in this ordinance or not, I, I, it's been a while, so. But that's something that has been done and has been used like other types of situations. Of course criminally as well. So if those dates work, gentlemen, then we can get something in motion, and I'll have Ray forward a draft.
He's working on the notice for the paper.
Is he? Okay, okay.
Because he has to summarize that. Do you want to push it off another week, so you have time to look at the draft?
No, 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 that ain't the problem. Probably been, I'm wondering about. If we set the first hearing fifteen, we gotta set them all right away. Can we set on the fifteenth when we have the very first hearing?
So have to second.
Set the secondary like following.
Well, we typically publish in the notice all three.
Okay.
So you kind of have to set them today so I can put that in the notice.
Yep.
I mean, it doesn't have to be consecutive weeks if you want to spread it out.
So I think we're gonna have quite, quite a bit of public input here, we could have.
And maybe you don't want nine thirty, I mean, if we need to allow longer time, maybe we want it later in the morning?
I might not be there that day just to let you, because we have a big trial that's currently set.
For the fifteenth?
Fourteenth through.
Fifteenth, so do you want us to put it off a week?
No, I mean, I still might be.
Okay.
It's a, it's a, it's a big one, so like you might have some, some, like Ray or somebody might be over here.
But I don't think they have to be consecutive weeks if you want to space it out. So like after your first reading, I think they can still tweak it, is that correct?
I would believe so, because that would make sense, that would make sense that we couldn't.
Yeah.
Because then the public knows, the public can go and watch the YouTube video, and then they can come to the next meeting to be like, I object to what these changes were. You know, they could do, say what they want. That's, that's the way I'm picturing it.
I have to work on the ATV ordinance.
Do I want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to set the public hearing dates for the Tuesday the fifteenth, Tuesday the twenty-second, and Tuesday the twenty-ninth.
Do you want to say ten, ten AM, then set nine thirty?
Start at ten o'clock, I'll read.
Yep.
I'll second that motion.
All right, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye.
Last but not least, Derek, because I'm on YouTube.
Yep, all right. So the other resolution is of course, first off, point of time when to have this hearing, because according to the ordinance in this section for the specific citation, any appeal to disposition of animal is to be overseen by the Board of Supervisors. We thought that, you know, it might be appropriate to do it in district courtroom where, one, it's a bigger space. Two, it gives it the treatment that it should, which is actual like. Hearing. And that's one part. And then the other part, and also like I think we talked to the clerk's office and we can, it's open at that time, that we can use it. And then two, given that you guys are the ones overseeing it and have to provide an order, you know, there is a part, because we, you know, it's Benton County, part of it. We ethic, our office ethically can't sit with two, we call it wearing two hats, I at least how I do it. So like we have to provide legal guidance for you guys as representatives, but also defending any sort of type of prosecution. And given that you guys have to write an order, and we can't really like pawn that off onto anybody else, because that's within our duties to provide you guys legal guidance. We can hire like special prosecutors to come in and sit forth. We just thought that would probably be the best way of going about it. And then two, there at the hearing, if there's any sort of questions legally that comes up, you can answer it. I can help answer it right there on the spot, or Ray. For you guys. And so by appointing, say, who we're asking is Ms. Victoria Cole, because she has done stuff before us, for us before with conflict cases, I know she's done at least three criminal ones that all have gone to trial, and and she's won. She's very good at what she does, and we always, we, we like, she's usually one to call for these types of instances to come in for help and whatnot, so. We would ask to appoint her as well for this matter.
And so as far as Victoria, she would be representing the county enforcing ordinance thirty-seven? And then what kinds of evidence would she be provided?
She will be provided everything that we would normally have at hand, because the, of course, I can't go in too much of the legal, legal standard, because like it's in the ordinance, but without the other party. It's like, you know, they present their reasons for why they want to appeal, and then you picture reasons why you don't. We're not requesting, so like, like, so, so any witnesses and stuff could be brought forth and discussed in front of the board. And, and, and she would be the one who's kind of like organizing, you know?
So could evidence that maybe that I had sent, but I'm unsure if it's already been collected or added to an investigation, would she have access to that? Would she be able to present that?
Anything that they, the, our, our law enforcement partners have, you know, we, we have it available to us.
Okay, so would that be able to be reviewed, just to make sure that? Because there has been stuff sent to law enforcement, but I'm unsure if they're including it within the case.
Well, there, there's a certain, there's a certain thing in the constitution that we have to. And, and, and it will be included. I know Ray has been the one communicating with Victoria, because they've, because he, he's the elected official that has to do these types of things. And, and if I'm not mistaken, he may have or Ray sent it to her. We just need approval so that she can go forth with the representation. And so, yeah.
So would, would it be able to be reviewed, so like let's say stuff trespassing videos, or let's say the killing videos, or the photographic evidence has been already sent, let's just say like inhabited.
Yeah, she, she would be able to review it.
She would be able to.
Just like any other sort of case that we would have to perform in court, we have that available to us.
Okay.
Yep.
Does it have to be provided by the Sheriff's Department, or is that provided by me?
Yeah, what they have collected. And if there's anything else, you know, you can bring that up with her.
Oh, with the attorney?
Because she's the one who's going to be handling the case. If, if this is approved, it's her case.
Okay.
I know I had, haven't responded to your email yet because we're waiting for some of these dates, so maybe, maybe we can give her Victoria's email then?
Um, once it's approved, I'm sure we can, because we have to provide her all, all the case and stuff. And then we can let her know if she's approved, then she can probably start doing what she needs to do. So, because I don't know what her process is, but she's really good at what she does.
I would move to approve Resolution twenty-five fifty-five, appointing Victoria Cole, special prosecution.
And, and then also the dates.
Oh, and that will be on Tuesday, July first. And that hearing will be in the courthouse at one thirty PM.
One PM.
One PM.
One PM.
Benton County courtroom, third floor courtroom, right?
Yep.
July first, one PM.
Change this to one.
Yes, I, I have it.
No, he's got the new ones. That's the one we had taken.
I've got the old one.
That was part of the way I didn't spot him, so I got all this stuff situated.
Okay.
And Victoria Cole has no like relationship with either party? We can be assured that there's no like, okay.
I, I mean, she, she's, you know, she has her own separate practice, she's a private practice attorney.
Hearing Benton?
Cedar Rapids.
Cedar Rapids, okay.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Seaman, aye.
Bull's aye. I go, I've got an old one, with a long time. Reports. I did give with the Zoom meeting last week in time, took me a long time to sign it, I'm terrible. But we did have our vote and approved the budget items for, that'll go to the Regional Governance Board on Thursday. And that was a good meeting last week. Mine all seem to fall off last week of the month, well, I've got three on Thursday and a large one Friday.
I had three meetings last week. I had a Hartland Zoom meeting at, at ten o'clock on Thursday, and it was, it was quick one actually, it was only, only an hour long. I also met with the Department Historical Preservation Department. I attended that via Zoom as well, because it was seven o'clock here. They did have a couple of questions, and I did reach out to Haley. Some of the registrations and things that they have, they were wondering about a PDF fillable format. And Haley responded that if they send the form that they would like to have, that it can be turned into a PDF and sent back. This saves them from mailing a form out or having somebody have to email it, print it, if it don't be done that way.
Just have to have a special license to be able to edit PDFs.
Yeah. And then they also had to question if, if someone wants to pay for these things via credit cards, is there, is there an avenue to do that or no?
We do not, the only office that does would be the treasurer, but that is a cost to the, you know, it would be costly to us per, per transaction.
Like three percent, four percent, or whatever it is we have to pay. They were just wondering, to make things easier, because a lot of people don't have, you know, everything's a debit card, they don't have an actual checkbook. But that's just something we're gonna have to, to figure out.
Maybe put that in their notice, pay cash or?
Cash or, or, or check, yeah, okay. And what was my third one? Oh, East, East Central Iowa Workforce Developmental Board. We had a meeting eleven o'clock on Friday, June the twentieth. And that was just to approve the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget and share twenty-ED agreement. So really, that was a quick meeting as well, so, yeah, that's what I had last week.
Well, I met with Anna and Derek, we went over the EMS draft about what the funds will pay, what will not. Trying to alleviate all the small bills coming into the courthouse with EMS.
Under a thousand dollar ones and stuff like that.
And then like Haley, like, like I was, after we met, I met with Haley and the ladies the very next day to kind of go over what processes would help them, and then I made additional changes, and then I think I sent it to
Yep.
everyone for review.
Meeting got changed, so it's not next week, it's the following, right?
July eighth.
Yeah, so not Monday, but her, or Tuesday firstly.
So I also had landfill last week, and the only thing going on there, the contractor pushed the lagoon digging back to July sixteenth before they moved in. So, lagoon. So, about it. Public comment or anything interesting lasting three minutes?
Just a quick question, all this stuff with these animals and stuff, is this project an idea back to everybody's head of, I'll bring them back to the animal shelter? Because it sounds like there's a need. Have you guys even discussed it?
I.
Might not be a bad idea.
Yeah, I guess, I'm not clear as to why it was disbanded, I mean.
Only. Way before my time, but I know when the conservation took over it, the cages and everything that was inside the building, they gutted it. They're gone, no longer around.
Yeah, that was the thing.
Because I think it was, it was a priv, I thought it was somebody private, or someone not related to the city.
Dog pound.
Yeah.
Garrett Whitmer was there.
Well, we banked them, right?
Not all of them.
Yeah, not all of them, because I was volunteer, I took a lot of stuff over at Christmas times and different times. Like it's food and everything. I moved out here in ninety-one, and, yeah, I used to take stuff over.
Was it the Humane Society? Because I know there was a contract that was recorded.
We pay, we pay out as, as a occurrence happens, like different things happen.
Right, so like I just saw that, I just.
We used the Cedar Valley Humane Society, I mean, that we do have options.
Yeah, and I'm too, I'm still new to the area, I never even heard of.
Yeah, so like it's. Yeah. So like if you're, the dog's in your possession, we don't know. We, we wait so long. If somebody doesn't come claim it, we usually contact the Humane Society.
Okay. Where do you take animals now then? I mean, you, didn't they have a place down? What kind of animals? I mean, what, like lost animals? Yeah, they say you pick up something wrong. Well, we try to not use the Humane Society as much as possible. We try to find the owner before we just trip a call out and cost the county extra money, you know?
So a lot of times people will say, hey, I found this dog. I'll just hold on to it. Can put it on the sheriff's Facebook page.
Try to find the owner. And if absolutely they can't, you know, obviously people dump dogs. So if we can't, after a day or so, we can't find the owner, then yeah, we, we will trip to Humane Society and they will come pick up the, the animal. But in a situation like we had with, with what you're referring to, I, I don't know. We don't just grab dogs and just take them until the court hearing or something like that. So I don't think anything would have changed within this situation.
Technically the towns are responsible for inside the town.
Correct.
Only thing you're responsible is incorporated. Yes.
Correct.
So then, so then there's probably then nobody except the homeowner then to respond to a situation like that. It's left to the homeowner.
Or.
As far as what?
To take any action against the animal or the animal being at large on their property. So like a resident of Valplane can't rely on the sheriff's department to take.
That's the city in Valplane.
City takes care of their animals.
If you live inside the city limits.
Yeah. It's the mayor and the council and then the Valplane Police Department. That's their responsibility. In the country then, when you cross the line, it's his responsibility.
But to make something clear, we don't capture dogs. We don't transport the dogs.
Yeah, no, I.
We would call like the Humane Society or something.
I understand that. And you know, I, as I've experienced, you know, there's usually a, uh, animal control agency that exists within a town or a county to handle those. So it's not the sheriff's department that's usually addressing those issues. It's animal control, other.
And then that's going back to like what you were kinda saying earlier is like back then, you know, we had that available, but then again, they incorporate language for when.
That went away. So yeah, so this gentleman's.
And honestly, I don't know that we could, if we could justify a full-time dog catcher at this time. I mean, I don't, yeah, we've, I feel like we've had a, a couple of animal complaints that have kinda brought everybody's attention. But overall, we don't normally have these kind of issues. You know, I, I just don't know that we need a full-time, somebody on staff. See, that's where those are.
I don't see the county spend over what, four hundred dollars maybe total?
That's what I'm saying. It's not, I don't think it's a full-time person that is.
It's not an everyday thing.
Or if it's like a bite to a person, we might have to have the dog tested for rabies. There's, it's just like a, when an occurrence happens.
Right.
There again, that would be barge.
Barge and the sheriff's office, they work together on that.
And those are things that we'll talk about like once this ordinance gets moved in and stuff. And that's where, you know, those, the purposes of those public hearings is to then, to get those, to get that, get something in line that fits with.
Things have changed.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, absolutely.
The ordinance was actually drafted for fit more, but yeah.
That's the way, that's the way I understood it.
Well, and just a suggestion is then considering, you know, giving a potentially vicious animal back to a, a dog owner who's demonstrated that they're not keeping the dog on their property. And then the, the time period in between now and then carrying that animal then is still residing at that same residence and is still a threat to the rest of the community. So then.
And that's where, that's where, where I was kinda saying, we're in that area where there's, there's not good language to help out for those situations and, and it sucks. And that's why we're doing these types of changes and having these talks. So then we can make sure to put the best ordinance out there that we can for the county.
I have a couple of questions just on like materials provided to Victoria. Is there somebody who I can ask that to? Or like what my role is supposed to be in next week's?
Um, I'm pretty sure normally when we get cases, we get everything involved, including witnesses that were talked to or involved.
What if no witnesses were ever talked to?
Um, I'm sure they'll, she, she knows the situation and I know we have all your, the, if you're referring to your contact information, she'll probably, she probably likely hasn't already. Cause, uh, if not, you can provide it to me and I can provide it to her.
So I can provide you with all of the evidence and witness statements and things like that? And then you will hit her?
Um. You guys have. We have, yeah, cause like we have everything.
Can I put Kelly needs here? Everything that you've given our department has been uploaded to a website for the county attorneys on June ninth. Every single thing, emails, everything, pictures, videos.
The text messages from.
So whatever they have, they will turn over to Victoria. If you have anything in addition that maybe you've, you've got witness statements or something since June ninth?
Well, witness statements from, uh, I would like just to be included from the incidents of people.
I only uploaded what you gave our office prior to Ju- June ninth. At that point, we turned it over to the county attorney.
Okay. We didn't have anybody come to take witness statements.
Okay.
So.
We're not getting.
Yeah. Um, we can, I can talk to you afterwards on that. Cause I don't want to get too off to be passive the agenda. Sorry about that. Yeah.
So I'll try to let you follow up with the emails. I don't think, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
I have any number of thoughts about a proposed ordinance change on this animal thing, but I'm not gonna go into it now cause we don't know what the proposal is. So at this point, I guess I'd leave you guys with this thought. Be very careful how you proceed. Cause I can think of any number of scenarios where the county could get wrapped around the axle with some of these ideas. And I think it needs to be reviewed very carefully. And I'm not too sure these things are best handled in the courthouse and maybe they should be handled in the courtroom. I don't know how you can write an ordinance to cover everything, but we don't know. We haven't seen it yet.
That, that's where like I was kinda referencing earlier to like the procedure and stuff.
Yes.
That, that needs to be, and then two, part of that is depending on the type of matter it is to, I don't know what the Iowa code references to what's the county's responsibility versus what the court can handle. So, but, but that's part of the procedure thing that I was kinda mentioning earlier. So in my head, I know what I'm talking about. But I forget the words.
Quickly, responsibility, uh, is the county gonna assume responsibility for the DAP and the mental health and the situation the state has put these poor people in? So up in the air, unorganized, nobody knows what's gonna happen. And, and I think you guys have got a good start on that. How are we gonna protect Benton County from liability, uh, extra staff payments? And I know that, I, you know, I was at the Buchanan County meeting yesterday and, and yes, there's one person that'll probably have to get laid off, but you know, FICA, IFRS, those type of things. And unfortunately these people, if they, if they get laid off, then they start at step one rather than the twenty or twenty-five years. But remember, yes, that's, that's unfortunate for the one or two people or three people to get laid off, but you're representing the county and, and what is the, what is the best decision that's gonna make us the least liable? So anyway, I think you got a good start on it. You're open-minded and we gotta give this guy more work. So anyway, that's all I have to say, but it's, it's unfortunate situation. The state has dumped on the counties.
I'm just observing.
Sheriff?
I got nothing more.
Okay. I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moves.
So I got.